Welcome those here with us. Let's jump right in. So our really, I guess, most controversial item, if you want to call it that, is item one, proposal to approve an amended plat for Bellevue subdivision plat B. Take it away, Wayne.
You say that simply because it's the only item?
Yeah, basically. Got your butt pumping a little bit, right?
Okay, your bet. Jody helped out today, and today he gave us some copies, some of the same things, but hopefully you've had an opportunity to read it and look at it. I'm available to answer any questions that you have about the things that I've been involved in. And I want to avoid repeating specifically all of the material that you have, but there's a few things that I want to point out that I think are important. The planning commission looked at this last week, and unfortunately, the person who was supposed to represent the developer forgot about the meeting. So he wasn't there, so we have not had an opportunity to ask questions of the developer. Tonight, Ken Berg is here. He's the engineer of record for Bellevue, Carol Bell. And so if you have questions of him, please do, if there's questions that you have after reading the material that we've provided. What I thought would do, and you can certainly change things around if you want, I thought I'd take a little bit of time here, and then turn the time, and then have Ken give presentation, and then that followed up with Ted Mickelson, who, as our city engineer, has had input into this and will be making a recommendation to you all. We just, a brief review of a few things. When the planning commission and later you approved the final plat, there was a note in it. And the note was that all the field dirt that had been deposited on the development site over the years was to be removed. And we found out that that's plus or minus around 20 feet. And most of it is in the ravine, but some of it is, as they've put it down, has spilled over to the other areas as well, but not much, but most of it's in the ravine. So after that was passed by planning commission council, then Bellevue got in touch with Ted and requested a further review of that to see if there was an alternative that would satisfy the city and meet the needs of the subdivision and the development as well. So Ted and I then met with Carol Bell, Ken Berg, William Turner, Steve McClary. Steve is acting as kind of a project manager for Carol Bell at this time and helping her with paperwork and other things related to the development. So we met on site over there and looked at what had been done with the field dirt that had been deposited there, had some discussions with them, and they again asked the city to review that to see if there was any alternative that the city would be satisfied with, rather than removing all of the undocumented soil. So Ted came back and did some work, and I'll let him explain what he has done, and came up with a proposal that Bellevue is satisfied with. And so we informed them that since the prior approval was based on a different set of facts, that it needed to go through the city process again, review by the planning commission and city council, to see if they're the ones who would look at all the facts, recommendations, et cetera, and make, the council would make final decision on it. So the planning commission, on our own and with the input from Ted, we recommended acceptance of what Ted had done. There was some hesitancy to that, and there still is, and I'll discuss a little bit of that tonight. But anyway, that was our recommendation, so it comes to you with that. So with that said, as a little bit of a background, let me share some information that we've gathered in the process. Now, all along, we have been asking, and I'll use the term Bellevue, that's a subdivision, but there are, again, a number of parties here. Sometimes I'll refer to a specific individual, but sometimes just Bellevue.
It is.
It is, that's correct. And really, the only issue is the soil that's been put there that wasn't approved, that's undocumented. Although, there is another issue which I'll share with you that's kind of will come to light. So there's a letter that you have from CMT Engineering, from one of their principals, which is William Turner, and this is dated June 11, 2019. And it's a letter to Carol Bell, talking about the work that need to be done there. And the second paragraph outlines, in his view, the kind of soil that would need to be placed there. And so that's important for this discussion, because that wasn't done. His recommendation was not followed in the type of soil that should be placed there. And again, just to acquaint you with our ordinances, there should have been nothing placed there, because that hadn't received a final plat designation yet. And our ordinance say until the plat is final, the developer has no authority to go forward and do anything with that, until the city gives a final plat, and after that time, then the process can move forward. So they hadn't received a final plat at this point in time. But he identifies, Mr. Turner identifies, the kind of soil and field dirt that should be placed there. Particular note says, almost to the end of the paragraph, "Field density tests should be performed on every second lift to verify that compaction has been achieved. If the fill material is less than 70% passing, then the thing they use, a three-quarter inch sieve, we recommend visual observation of compaction for each lift. The side slopes of the fill should be no steeper than two to one vertical." So that was on June 11, 2019. Three days later, on June 14, 2019, Mr. Turner writes another letter under CMT Engineering letterhead, explaining, at that time, there was about three feet of fill that had been placed in the ravine. And says that at the end of the first paragraph. In the second paragraph and last paragraph, he says, "Based on our observations and testing, the material placed thus far in the ravine at the site meets our recommendations and has been properly compacted. Therefore, it is our opinion that additional fill can be placed per our reference letter. CMT will test and/or observe the additional fill to be placed, and will continue to provide our results and observations." From 2019 to current, off and on, field dirt was placed in the development, again, unapproved. We constantly asked them for information, who was approving this field dirt? We would never get an answer from them. And so it was disappointing, and my view is, if you don't get an answer, then it's either a bad answer, or it didn't get done. To me, a developer would be interested in providing the city all the details to support what they have done, even though it was not approved. So he indicates, back in 2019 then, that what has been done so far meets their, talking about the three feet that they placed there, meets their standard and qualification for acceptable fill. And then there's a sieve analysis that they have provided to, showing the different sizes of fill, rock, et cetera, and the percentage of it attached to that June 14, 2019 letter.
So that's just for the first three feet, correct?
Correct, yes. Then the next letter we have from CMT, and it was included in your packet, was a March 16, 2023. So we don't have any letter or analysis documentation of anything that was done from 2019 to 2023. Although, in this letter, in the March 16 letter, they said, "We understand that the contractor would like to import fill from another lot in Woodland Hills," and they identify the place of that. And they said, "They've looked at that, and that fill seemed to meet the standard to use that." Whether they did or not, again, we don't know. We don't have any documentation to that effect. We, over the years, have repeatedly asked for any documentation that they have for the work that they've done, and all we've got is what I've shared with you all in the packet. In the second paragraph of that letter, said, "The proposed import fill is more than 30% larger and three-quarter inches, which means it is unproctable, and that means it can't be tested." So visual observation, the visual observations recommended in our reference letter should be applied. We recommend that the contractor contact CMT so that a professional engineer can visit the site during compaction of the fill to visually verify that adequate compaction is being achieved. Now, we since learned, once we had these letters provided to us by Bill Turner, that one of his engineers did observe approximately 12 feet of fill going in by a number of visits. There's another letter, which I think he said there were five visits paid to the site and observations made. We don't have a record of that, other than what's included in the CMT letter. And Ted can talk more about that, because he's talked to that engineer who was on site during that time, and looking at this, up to 12 feet of fill being deposited there. In fact, in the March 31 letter, now, a week later, Mr. Turner writes another letter to Carol Bell, and talks about the visits that they made, confirming that-
Is he directing to Carol, but not to the city?
Correct.
But we're just getting these letters.
From Bill Turner.
Not directly to us.
Correct. But he stamped them, and there's credibility that should be given to an engineer-stamped letter, whether he's for, it's almost like a sworn statement that he's saying, but he gave, Mr. Turner gave these to us when Ted and I were on site visiting several months ago there. He said, "During our visits to the site, CMT observed fill placements and compaction of the lifts of fill, and noted that the fill is being placed and compacted until there were no deflections of the fill being placed. To date, we estimate about plus or minus 12 feet of fill has been placed since our last letter dated June 14, 2019." That's the one I just shared with you all. The week before this, on the 20th, on March 23rd, again, we had ongoing, we'd drive by and we'd see new fill that had been placed there, and we'd contact them and say, and sometimes it was like, we don't know who's placing that fill, and maybe there was some of that, I don't know. But some of it was directed by them. This is an email that Jody sent to Corbett and Craig and Ted, when he was with Jones and DeMille, and myself. She said, "The contractor hauling dirt onto Carol Bell's property just left my office. Carol is telling him that a grading permit has been pulled and to continue dumping dirt." For one thing, we don't have a grading permit. So whether there's a misunderstanding or terminology, but we hadn't approved any dirt to be put there. He admitted that the dirt that is going on there has not been compacted, nor has it been tested. Now, let's give him the benefit of the doubt, and the window that he has there, that's what he's saying. His experience has been that it's not being compacted or tested. Prior dirt may have been, very well. It got to a point where, on that day, we should have stopped work order for them, to stop dumping dirt themselves, and there was one individual here in this process who told Jody that Carol Bell was the one who authorized his dumping of dirt. I won't say all of it, but his dumping of dirt there. So we issued, and we wrote an email to Steve McClary, told him that a stop-work notice had been placed on the property, and any further violations would result in a fine or even misdemeanor charges, or that's what our statute reads. So, and it is, as far as we know, it stopped then, but when we visited the site with the Bell group, we learned that there had been about 20 feet of field dirt placed on the site over the years. So I wanted to point those issues out to you. We, there was something that the planning commission kind of overlooked years ago, and it has to do with, those lots are going to be a challenge for septic systems. They know that, and in fact, the county health department identified three lots where they're going to have to have an alternate septic system, pretty much a self-contained septic system. Those, from what I understand, run anywhere from $50,000 to $60,000 to put into place. This came up years ago with our attorney on another piece of property that had similar problems, and he suggested then this notice be put on the final plat. And I'd like to read it to you, because whatever your decision is tonight, we'd like you to make part of that decision, the inclusion of this statement, because the planning commission did not do it. It's notice to lot purchasers. The approval, now this has nothing to do with the field dirt, okay? So, said, "The approval and recordation of this subdivision plat does not guarantee or assure a building permit can or will be issued. All lots in this subdivision must complete individual soil exploration and percolation tests, and obtain approval of individual septic systems from the Utah County Health Department before a building permit can be issued by Woodland Hills City. If acceptable soil conditions are not found in a large enough area for a drain field within each lot, then a septic system will not be approved, and a building permit will not be issued for that lot." So we'd like to have, as part of your decision, that that statement be included. I talked to Steve McClary today, and he didn't have a problem with that. They know they've got some septic issues they're going to have to deal with, and he told me he was fine with including that on the plat, whatever else gets included on that. So I just wanted to share that with you. Now, there's another issue that we kind of, everybody overlooked. With close to 20 feet of field dirt there, and again, most of it is in the ravine, although some of it spills out, how far it goes into the lots is kind of yet to be determined. But that has the potential of affecting the building height computations, because we measure from either the finished grade or the natural grade, whichever is lower. In this instance, the natural grade for that, where that fill has been placed, is covered. So some calculations will have to be determined of what the actual natural grade is, where if there's fill on where somebody wants to build their home. So that's something that we'll have to monitor when the time comes for building permits, but that's a little issue that has come up, one of those unintended consequences of what was done.
So that to potential, we're putting the safety in place for the buyer beware, this is where the problem is septic, that they might have their dream home and come in and say, and then learn, oh, we didn't even know that it's not just on the top.
Say that one more time.
I was just saying that, you know, we're putting the notice of septic issues on the plat, so buyer beware, this is going to happen, that they might buy it and just go and look at it, and it looks like this dirt there, you know, natural land, and they have their dream home, and we have to deny it because they don't understand that the natural grade is however far down. So how do we, we just address that at the moment and have them be upset with us because they think the ground is the ground?
We had a discussion of that in the staff meeting, and debated it back and forth, and felt the city was primarily responsible for the development part of that project going forward. People should be doing, and need to do, their own due diligence. Sometimes they don't, a lot of times they do, but we felt that that was a due diligence that somebody should explore and look into as they, even before purchasing a lot, if that's something that potentially could affect, could affect them. Certainly, the septic has a chance of affecting it, but we wondered, where do we draw the line with those kinds of things? And it's a building issue, it's kind of out of the city's hands now, and so that was kind of the decision that we decided on, is to leave that by itself, let the person in their due diligence learn that, and if, and maybe in most cases, it won't be affected. The house will sit back far enough that it's not affected by this field dirt that's been put in, in the ravine. So that's what we decided. Now, you all can, whatever you want to do with that, but-
No, it is, when they're buying, they should reach out to the city and stuff. It's part of theirs or their agent's job to do some due diligence, so they should reach out to the city and find out the build, you know, how buildable the lot is. You can't just trust the seller necessarily, because sellers have to make money, right?
So will it be in our notes that those lots have a significant amount of fill on them, so that when they call, because maybe it will be years before they're built on, and all of us will be gone, and whoever the building official is at the time may or may not know about that fill, so would that be in our notes-
It'll be in the file.
-to be able to explain to them if they call and do that-
All this information that you have and we've shared with you will be in city files.
Jody has to be.
She's going to be on a beach in Hawaii.
At least when they call about this lot.
That's all I think I had for you all, to share that with you. Do you have any questions of me with the material that you got, or in anything related to this?
I do, and you're probably thinking, I'm asking you to start over, but what's the to-do about fill? Is it because there's going to be a road there, and it wouldn't be compacted enough, or-
That's correct.
Okay.
It's, the road is going on, should be going, on either terra firma, okay, natural, or if dirt has put there, then there's a process of laying it down and a compaction, compacting it down, and stepping it so that it's as good as native soil, so to speak. And Ted can probably speak more to that, too, being the engineer he is and involved in that sort of thing.
So my experience with fill has been a disaster. Just a real quick illustration, they dug my drain, my drain field for the septic, and then filled it in, no compaction, then built a driveway on top of it. And in a year, the driveway was suspended in the air, you know, I could look under it, and it was not a good thing. They had to replace my whole driveway, so. Compaction's critical, even for their lots and things that happen on their lots.
Can be. They will, if they, when they pour their foundation, if they've got this field dirt, they're going to have to go below that to get to a firm ground to put the foundation on.
Yeah, yeah, or it'll be trouble.
Plus, if that becomes a city street, then we have to maintain it.
It will be a city street, that's the big-
That's what I was going to ask, is this going to be an HOA, or will it be a city street?
It'll be a city street.
Because we had issues with other city streets that were done and by a developer, and years later, we have to come back because it's past the bond period or past whatever, and we've had to replace it.
Well, and then it's all the taxpayers that end up paying for the repair. That's not fair.
Correct. Now, keep in mind, what Ted is proposing, it's his view as an engineer, that this will overcome that issue, the way that he's proposed to Bellevue to do, to do that street. So listen to him and-
And an extra year on the warranty, so to speak, for the road.
Yes.
Part of this proposal.
Now, there's another little hitch.
Just a little hitch.
And we kind of, you know, didn't come up till Jody and I were talking. First year of the durability bond, only covers the 10% bond that we take in. If it costs $100,000 to do that road, there's only 10% of that that is covered the first year. And it's the way our ordinances are written. The second year, it's fully covered for the $100,000, because of the way that we take in the bond money. So that's another little hitch that we didn't realize or discover until today. If that goes-
That's not really a little hitch, is it?
I know. Ted?
Yeah, well, yeah, you'll get your chance.
Okay. He can explain in detail the nuances with that, but that just kind of came up today. So, anyway, any other-
I got one question here, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So typically, right, soil is bedrock, compacted, native material, and then organic, right? So standard process is all the organic needs to be-
It's removed.
-grubbed, right? Pulled out, and then if you're raising it up further, compacted material goes on top of that up further.
Yes.
So we've got documentation that the first three feet of non-native soil did receive first seven, first 12 feet? So the first 12 feet we have as compacted? We have compaction studies?
Not, no.
We have a letter from the engineer, that all places compacted. I'll describe a lot of it.
Okay.
We'll get that whole engineer excited.
Perfect, then I'll wait for you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, great presentation, thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, so who's next?
If they can.
Okay, Ken, come on up.
I think I would like to hear from Ted first, just to talk about those issues, and then I can answer further questions.
All right, that's fine with me. Okay, and Ted, you're up.
So I'll kind of look at this from the, the way I've kind of described this, I'm going at this from the engineering angle, right, not really the ordinance angle or violation. That's kind of Wayne's arena, does a great job at it. So that's, I've kind of left that to him, I'm just looking at this from an engineering aspect. So, and I'll give you kind of just a quick history on what I understand about it, because I wasn't here during a lot of this time, but, and then what I've discovered, and then what we came, kind of where we went with this. So there was an initial three feet of fill put in, and then an additional nine on that, so total of 12, that went in, we'll say with the first- that went in, we'll say with the first import. I don't know what other to call it. When I was working at Jones and Mill, I think we were dealing with at the time, three feet. And I listed, I think, three or four different options they have. One is they can pull it out, recompact it if it meets the requirements. Two, they can just pull it out, start over. Three, find some way to verify that it's good material or provide us with the reports. Then since that time, there was another nine feet of fill put onto this 12 feet. Now, this 12 feet was, subsequently, there was a letter provided by Bill Turner, the geotech engineer, who said this 12 feet is good to go, basically. He said, we observed it, it's been compacted in place, we're comfortable with it, we're great. Then he stamped that letter. And just as an engineer, knowing the liability comes with your stamp, it's, it's, it's a huge deal when they stamp stuff. Right, it's, they're saying basically, this is on me if something's wrong. So he stamped that letter. Now, the observer of that, the guy who was onsite for CMT, working for Bill, is a resident, Nate Pack. He was the guy that was going out there on this initial 12 feet and watching it be compacted. So I talked to Nate about why do we didn't get, we didn't we get compaction reports with that? And I'll just caveat this by saying Nate is willing to talk to you on the phone if you'd like. I can get him on a phone call and he's agreed to answer any questions you might have of him on this. So he said generally what happens is he goes out there, he takes all the notes on these, they call them daily observation reports, right? When he goes out to the site, there's a report he fills out, he keeps that on his phone. And then he takes some pictures and stuff like that, and then he sends it all to Bill. And then from there, it's up to Bill to interpret the reports. And then he can either take that and, and put them in a, a format that could be provided to the city if we wanted it. He said, that's the step that likely hasn't happened. Probably they've got the information, it just hasn't been put into a format to get to the city. He said, that's not uncommon because then what Bill will do is write a letter saying that we have observed it, everything met the standards. He stamps it and sends it off to the city. So that's kind of their typical process of how they do things. If we want the observation reports, he says he could probably get them. It would just take them a little bit because they have to get them into a different format to be able to submit them to us. Anyway, so that was the initial 12 feet that went in. Following that 12 feet, as I'm understanding, there was another eight feet of material that was brought in that was undocumented. And CMT, Bill Turner, admitted that. We didn't see that go in, we don't have any report of it going in, and we don't, didn't do any observation. And so what we asked of them is, the first step is we can do some testing, figure out what kind of material that eight feet is. So we provided a, I think it was a, it might've been a letter that I wrote down to him and said, okay, here's what we'd like you to do. You can either pull all the material out, start over, that eight feet, or you can go out and do some testing and prove to us that it's good material and provide us a plan of how you're going to do that, test it and stuff like that. Subsequently, they went out and tested it. We're doing test pits. So they did four test pits along the length of this road. I think it was four test pits along the length of this road. And they went down the eight feet to that material that was undocumented, is what we called it, or wasn't observed by them. And they did all the, the testing on it. And then they sent us a letter, Bill Turner sent us a letter and said, here's the findings of what we found. Here's our recommendations on, based on what we found. And then he also submitted the test results. So I went through the letter, went through the test results. His letter was basically, in summary, take out two feet of material, recompact and build back up. When I got looking at their actual test pits, I was seeing some material that was about the two foot level that I was a little concerned with. So I said, here's what I would suggest we could probably do as a city. We'll have you take out three feet of material, you'll go in and proof, compact it all, the material that's there, and then we'll proof roll it. And I'll come out and walk it with you. And this is what I've done on three other roads here now, Bear Hollow, West Loafer and South Loafer. We'll come out and walk it with you, we'll proof roll it. If we see any bad spots or we find any what we call deleterious material, which is tree roots, branches, anything like that in that, if we find anything or any soft spots, you'll pull that out. And you'll keep doing that till we're satisfied we're to good material. So we'll start at three feet. If it looks good, we can start building from there. If it doesn't, you're going to pull out and put in good material until we're satisfied we've got a good surface. What that does is it gets us down, once they get down to that three feet and they really get in there and proof roll it and compact it. If it doesn't, what we call tighten up, that means we're still not on great material. If it tightens up, it's probably pretty good material. And just honestly, looking at the sieve, the test reports they did, it's not bad material. It's a lot like what we have in West Loafer. So if it tightens up and looks like it's pretty, we're sitting on a pretty good foundation, then we'll come in and put in, it's a geotextile fabric over the whole road, which basically is a structural bridge, if you will, between the new and the existing material. So we'll put that geotextile fabric in at that three foot level. And then from there, we'll bring in the, we'll call it the sub base material, which meets our spec. And you put that in and one foot lifts and you compact as you go. If they can get compaction on that first lift, that tells us we're sitting on a pretty good material. And then they build up the additional three feet and then put the road in. So that was the recommendation that went back to them, that maybe this is something we could do. So that's what got included on the final plat that you're reviewing today is those recommendations. I, I talked to Nate about that as well, how he felt about that recommendation. He was, he thought that was a great recommendation and the, and the right thing to do. But once again, that's all for you to decide. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable and honestly, it's the exact same thing we're doing on West Loafer right now. As we know, that was all important material that was brought in to cover up the sewer line when they put that sewer through there. We dug down four feet in this case, just because we, it was about three and a half, three and a half to four feet. And then we put in a little bit of material because that took us right down to the top of the sewer and water lines. So we had to put in a little material to cover them, then we put in geotextile, now we're building back up. Contractor putting his first lift yesterday, compacted this morning, had it tested live and got 95%. So now we're feeling like we're pretty good. And that was, he, he's just using the material he took out, getting the good stuff out of it and putting that back in. And it compacted, we ran a proctor on it, it compacted to 95%. So now he's been on his second lift today. Essentially the same thing there. And Nate kind of helped us put that together too, was just, because that's what he does for, he's a geotech guy. So that was the recommendation that went on the plat, was that recommendation. And that was a letter we sent back to Bellevue subdivision folks.
And they have agreed to that recommendation, what you're saying?
Yeah, they put those notes on the plat to that fact.
So although we don't have all the paper trail from the beginning, because I, I think, well, Doral and I were both the only ones that were here when we approved that in, in 2019. You know, it seems like there's been a lot of things happening since then, and that's why I appreciated it all together like that. I know at the time, we were, we were worried about different slopes, we were worried about the fill, the compaction. All of those things were brought up at that time. And so it, it was surprising that we didn't have this paper trail of, just to keep it in mind. But I appreciate that you have done the work to make sure that you feel comfortable in the process and that that is coming together. In a former life, I used to do soil testing.
Well, and, and you know, when we're, we're looking at this particular subdivision, I mean, six lots, I think is what it is. The debt, the, they call it the ADT, the average daily traffic loading, on this is going to be fairly minimal. So I think with a three foot section, we'll be spreading that load out pretty good in that top three feet if we get that rebuilt. We may have a few heavy pieces of fire truck or something else occasionally go in there, but.
And.
But that was the recommendation.
With their construction trucks, that load will be fine when people finally get in there. Because also with the septics having to go behind the homes, there's probably going to need to be some pretty heavy equipment to get in and, and set those in place.
Yeah, yeah, and they're, you know, when we're talking heavy loading, we're talking like semis and stuff like that, which we don't have in this case. And in the occasional equipment truck, firing and stuff like that, not a big deal, but. And that geotextile fabric is, is really what, what adds a lot to this structural section and helps out a lot. So, and that's exactly what we're putting in on West Loafer because of these same concerns we had there. And just to speak really quickly to the bond, so to speak. So when a developer is doing a development project, there's essentially two options for them, they have. If they want to record the final plat and start selling lots before the improvements are built, they have to put up 100% of the cost of the improvements as a bond. That is in, in case they default for some reason, and they've already recorded the plat and sold lots, that the city now has the funding, 100% of the cost to do, finish the development, so we can hire another contractor to do it. If they choose not to record the plat and do the improvements first, then we require 10% bond. And they post that at the time that they start the improvements. Once they complete the improvements, and we, we go out and, and inspect them throughout the course of this, once they're completed with the improvements, we, we note that date, we hang on to that bond for a year after they complete the improvements, that 10%. Now, once that year's up, we go out and inspect it again, the site. If everything looks good, they get the bond back. If it doesn't, then we have to spend the money. Either that money, they, they have the option, they can come and fix it, or we can use the bond money to fix it at that point. So that's the year that we hang on to that bond. This case, we've asked for an extra year of bond. And there's still some question on, and, and I think what we're, we're talking about is we just continue hanging on to that same bond for this extra year. Now, there was question, should it be 10% of the road or 10% of the bond? But looking at the, the, just the, the amount of, the small amount of dollars involved in this, I mean, 10% of the road's probably not giving you enough to fix a pothole hardly, so. Our discussion now, and we don't, our ordinances are basically, we take the 10%. If they don't record the plat, we take the 10% and we hang on to that until the, the warranty period's over. Now, they can record the plat at the end of completion of the improvements, and we just continue to hang on to that 10%. Once we've accepted the improvements, they can record the plat, start selling lots, but we keep the 10%. Uh, in most cases, a year, in this case, we've asked for two years.
So with respect to that then, I mean, let's just say that there is a catastrophic failure in the road in the second year. Do we have the cash in hand then to make that fix? That's really what ultimately my concern would be is, is that cash there? And can we use it in the event of that sort of catastrophic failure?
So three, three, three things to that. Uh, I guess there's three answers, there's three options.
Okay.
If there's a cata-.
I pick B.
Yeah, you pick B? That's the one we hope for now. So first option is the developer can fix it. If there's some sort of failure, that's the first.
It's what?
When a, yeah, that's the first thing we do. We, we say, hey, developer, you know, we're not accepting this project, warranty period's still in place, just like you would anything else that you have a warranty on. You fix it, uh, that, that's the option. If the developer's no longer around, not interested, bankrupt, then we have the bond money that we've kept, that we can use then to fix.
That will be the full amount, not the 10%?
It's the 10%, it's all we've gotten in our ordinance. Yeah, we don't have the full amount. So now, the likelihood of all, everything failing is very, very.
I mean, we had Northview Circle and this keeps coming in my brain, is we approved that, it all tested fine after the first year or two, and it wasn't really until people started building that it all caved in and we had to pick up the mess. And it was, it was a nasty mess.
So it, it, we, we're, right now, that's not a, a thing we, per ordinance, we can't do. But we can keep the 10%. And with that, we can still send the bill to the developer. So we can use up that 50%, or sorry, 10% and still bill the developer. Say, hey, we spent the 50,000 or whatever it is, the 10%, and it ended up being twice that, here's the bill for the rest. That's option B for the ordinance to.
If they're still in business.
If they're still in business.
That was the problem with Northview Circle, right? They were no longer in business, we didn't have a bond, it failed and people, we had plotted the lot, so they had the right to build there.
But this is something too, keep in mind, this is not specific to this development, this is our ordinance for all developments.
Yes.
So it's nothing, I mean, we, this development in this respect is being treated just like every other development, other than we're asking for the year extension on what we can do.
So for, when we get to item five, items for upcoming city council meetings, it might be worth revisiting that, but anyway. Option C.
So, and the option C is we just use what bond money we have and the city finances the rest. And it all depends on the project, there's a reason for this, just like we were talking about today. In this case, we're talking about, say, a half million dollar development cost. And so 10% is 50,000, we're talking pretty small dollars. I mean, a lot of these developments outside of our city are tens of millions of dollars. So for, for a developer to put up 100% of the cost of a $50 million development projects, a pretty hefty lift. Now, some of those will put up letters of credit.
Kind of in line with how we're doing it, is, is, so we're kind of just keeping pace with other cities? Is that what you would say, or do we have kind of a?
That's a good question. This kind of came up, this whole discussion Jody and Wayne and I had late this afternoon, so we haven't had a lot of time to do research on it. But it's what our ordinance allows right now. And whether that's a state, and, and maybe Ken knows a little more, but maybe that's a state thing, maybe it's a city thing, maybe it's, I don't know, not sure.
It was just somebody threw it up in the air and said, hey, that sounds good.
Yeah.
You mean you and Doral did that?
We didn't have this part of the discussion back then, there were other concerns.
Ted, I have a question that I, I thought of after our discussion a while ago on this. If, if we're, say you're, they're removing that three feet and at two foot, eight inches, they get into deleterious material, that would put into question more in my, my mind. Is there a caveat if we, within that three feet, we find that material that we need to go another foot in that area? Or, or the whole area? Is that something that, that we should be looking at?
Basically, the, the request was if we find anything suspicious that we dig until we're comfortable, we're out of it.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure that that's very clear, that if, if we get right, almost to the three foot level and we find something that we can make it go.
Until we can get a good, tight, compatible material is what we're looking for.
And that's on the whole road.
It's on the whole road.
What's the length of that road again? I know it's in our notes, but I can't remember.
400 feet or something like that, I can't remember. 400 something feet.
Yeah, the total road, this fill portion is less than half of.
Ken, just so the, for the benefit of our recording and people online, just if you have something to say, just please speak into a mic and we can get you one.
So what I think what he's saying, the total was about 400 something feet, this fill material affects about half of the road. So yes, and that's exactly like on Bear Hollow, when we went up to Bear Hollow up there just recently, the same thing. We, they got down and kind of rough graded it, and then they compacted it. And when they got all of them with that, I walked up there and we did a roll test with them. And for those that aren't familiar with that, they get a really heavy piece of equipment and they drive up and down the road. And I walk alongside the tire and I watch for any soft spots. And if they hit any soft spots, we mark it and they come back and tear it out and fix it. Same thing we did on West Loafer that we're doing right now, and the same thing we do here. And also South Loafer, I did that too. Um, and so until we're comfortable that it's a good, they get a good tight compaction on it.
The only other question I would have on the engineering side is the initial 12 feet, we talked about this today, is did we get, did we, did we, did they scrub that lot where they're putting in fill? I don't, I don't want to have fill around trees that were just sitting there and they just filled them in, right? That means we've got that deleterious material. Do we have anything from our engineer? And I know he says it meets our spec, but that's the one question I have is, was the lot cleared before they started that first, first three feet and then, and then the nine feet after that?
Yeah, and that's a good question, other than the letter they gave us saying that they were good with the way it was done.
He said it was Nate.
Nate.
Or Nate, um, that would, that would.
Yeah.
Help me with that 12 foot section, that would make it very comfortable for the 12 foot section.
And if you guys alike, I can get him on the phone. I talked to him today and he's willing to jump on the phone with us and answer any questions you have of him. He was the observer of that 12 feet.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's now or, or after, or, you know.
Yeah, whichever.
I, I would like to have that.
And you said that he could compile all the imagery and everything that he had sort of.
His observation reports, yeah, yeah.
Did he have photos with those observation reports or is it just written?
Some, he took some photos, I don't know of what.
Yeah, I'd say it would be worth a phone call.
Ted, is there a certain amount of fill, certain feet, feet that would make the organic component not an issue? You know, if you put 100 feet of compacted soil over the top of organics, does it mute the organics problem? Because we're talking right now, if I'm doing my math right, we're at 23-ish feet of soil.
20, 20 is what they put.
So I've got three feet plus you said another 12.
No, it's three feet plus another nine, 12 total for that. They started out at three and then there went another nine.
So is that, are we worried about something? Because I have the same worry as, as Brian, was the lot rubbed prior to any compaction going on? So if he passed up on that first three feet of compaction, three feet of compaction on top of organics will compact very well at all.
Right, and that, I mean, and you're right, exactly there. If you're trying to compact on top of just topsoil and trees, you're not going to get compaction. So if they got a compaction in that first three feet, they were starting out on some pretty good. So if they got a compaction in that first three feet, they were starting out on some pretty good stuff, but.
I personally walked that every day around the time they were, before any fill was there, and I never saw them take any brush out. It just all went right in, right? That's what I remember. I know the higher stuff that I saw after that initial 12 feet, there was definitely It's got pushed into the trees. Yeah, it was just pushed into the trees. I saw stump balls. I saw their root balls. I saw all, all kinds of stuff in that.
That's, that's in part of what this geotech fabric's for.
Yes.
To give us that bridge. Um, provide that structural integrity of that base. And it's the same thing we have on the West Loafer, right? Because that was just all crap in there, so, so we put in that.
Because we got a P E to stamp, it has stamped on it, I'm I'm certain that it is, but I would like to have him say, yes, they grubbed the lot.
It's our battery backup.
Who's got a bad one?
Battery is just.
Some battery backup in the Skated computer.
Oh.
Been doing that last few days. I don't know if it's, anyway.
All right. So do we want to get, do you want to get Nate on the phone right now then?
That would be fine if that's, if now is the appropriate time.
Now, hopefully answers. He promised me would. In fact, he's been texting me during the meeting, so.
So many cities have had issues with.
Each state.
And once it's turned over everything to the city and you've plotted and you've approved it, then, and there's a problem, it comes back to the city, not to the person who stamped it, even though.
Well, they, it comes back to them too.
Yeah, the media doesn't go back to them. They go back, the media doesn't go back to them. It goes back to the city.
Well, it can, but you're, you're right. I mean, that stamp means, like Ted said, it means.
It means something.
They would have professional liability insurance too, right? I mean, if they drop the ball, then.
And they have to maintain it for long after they're doing, they're, they're done stamping it.
So the professional liability, uh, generally is carried by the company, at least the ones I work. So, um, so that'd be the company who carries that professional liability and they cover the engineers that work for them.
And even if they didn't carry it forward until the time this happened, they would still be on the hook for malpractice that occurred.
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would, I mean, if something were to go, say, wrong and you had to go after the engineering company, it would be CMT, even if Bill Turner's there or not, that you'd be going to.
And probably CMT's insurance company, really.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, uh, hold on one second. Um, while you're trying to get, um, oh, well, unless you got him now. I was going to say instead of just waiting.
Answer your phone. Because maybe he doesn't have his ringer on.
He just texted me a couple of minutes ago. I told him, hang on a little longer and he's thumbs up, so I don't know why he's not picking up. Y'all scared him.
Um, did you have something that you wanted to?
Hey Nate, you're, you're on here with the, uh, you're on here with the entire city council. So, and, and you're being recorded. So they do have some questions for you. I'll try and communicate if you can't hear over the phone. And then can you all hear him on this? If I hold this, okay, so they can hear you. Okay. If you talk in plain English. So they've got a question. I'll let him go ahead and ask the question, see if you can hear it. If not, I'll let you know the question is.
So Nate, my question is on the original, uh, fill that was put in the first three feet, before they put in the first three feet, but then the additional nine following that. Was the lot scrubbed? Was it, was it grubbed?
Grubbed.
Did we get rid of all the trees and on all the organic materials before that three feet was put in?
Absolutely.
Okay. I was, I, we were sure that it was, but I wanted that assurance from you.
No, I get, that's a, that's one of the biggest issues people screw up on. So good question.
Okay, that was my only question for, for him at this point. Anyone else?
All right. Thank you, Nate.
Geez Nate, that's all I had for you.
One and done.
That's it?
That's, yeah, that was an easy question.
Geez, God, make it hard.
Well, we may call you back.
Yeah. We talked a little bit about
And this, I mean, I don't know if everyone can hear me, but. We are good with it. I, was there enough and with the changes that, that Bill did and that you I, I think we're in line to have a really good product, if that.
Yeah. Oop, I lost you. Thanks Nate.
Oh, wait.
Hold on. Oh, do you have pictures?
I have a few for sure of the fill way back when, the first eight feet or whatever, 12. I think it was, I think I have pictures up until eight. After that, I did a few.
Okay.
Visits over the years. It's been a long time, but there were a few at the beginning.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
All right. Thanks Nate. That was all.
Okay. Yeah, let me know if you can.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else for Ted?
Does Nate work for CMT or is he just a, a contracted geotech?
He works for CMT.
Okay, thanks Ted. Very helpful. All right, Ken, got anything to add? And while we have a little break, I, I, did you have something? You, you need to speak into a microphone if you're gonna say anything.
CMT?
Yeah, so it sounds like it's around a long time ago.
That would be a question for Ted. He's our expert.
So CMT has been around, I don't know the year they started, but they've been around a long time. And they are, they, they're, uh, it's an engineering firm and they specialize in geotechnical engineering or soils, dealing with soils. They are, and, and I know there's a lot of, uh, some different thoughts, but CMT is, is a, um, a, a well-recognized authority in, in this geotechnical. I mean, they're, they're, they're good at what they do. And and I know this, I know there's, there's going to be different opinions, but I've, I've known Bill Turner, not known him, but I've known of him. The guy that was over this for lots of years and he has a pretty good reputation in the industry.
3.8 stars on Google reviews.
And, and that's reliable.
You've been reviewed, haven't you?
Once by my daughter and I got five stars.
No, as long as they, so they do compaction by mechanical means. And as long as they get compacted in and tested, yeah, it's, so they have those big rollers, you might see them roll back and forth. That's what compacts the material back in and it compacts it back to basically what it was when it was like native material before it was disturbed. And so, and then they do their testing and their standards that they have to meet with their compaction and testing. As long as they meet those standards, it's pretty good stuff. And I, I've actually heard that once, um, fill material has been in place for uncompacted fill material in place for seven years, it's then considered native, as good as native. So.
All right. Good questions. Okay, Ken, take it away.
I made notes, so, um.
Can remind us your last name?
Berg.
Berg, okay.
From Berg Civil Engineering. I do not know my Google star rating, but, well.
You might not want to know.
Yeah.
It takes us one minute.
I know, that's exactly right.
Now, I'm now interested.
Have you worked for Bells? Is that how?
No, my, I am the civil engineer that prepared the land development plans. And that meets all of your standards and specifications in your code to gain approvals. And so this whole exercise tonight is really kind of a, um, almost a workshop for you guys on the importance of your standards and specifications. So that when you have issues like this, Ted has documents to support what he wants to say, hey, these are our standards. This is what you're supposed to do. You didn't do it. This is how we get you back to the point because it's all in your standards and specs. So good job. You have them and your staff is knowledgeable about them. There are other cities that I work in, not so much. And it gets both me that are trying to live by your rules. When you don't have rules, then it just becomes a mess. And so that is, that is, uh, very helpful. We are fine with the notes being added to the plat for the septic. We did enough septic work to meet the county's requirements, to give you a letter to meet your requirements to get a subdivision approved. Everybody fully acknowledges that doesn't mean that the septic system is designed. You know, I will tell all of you in this room that, um, if you have to replace your septic system, chances are you're going to be using an alternative system as well. Just the county's new requirements are not the requirements that your septic system was designed to. And so the shock value of, oh, they have to do this alternative system. Well, the county's not even gently nudging. They are pushing many people to this alternative systems as the answer to, well, this is now kind of what the standard subdivision is. Or standard septic system is, is this alternative system. So.
So a builder or, um, whether it's the homeowner or a builder that they have contracted with, will know about this standard and will put it into the bid from the start. And they're just saying, this is how much it is.
The county will make sure that that happens to try to get that septic system. So.
Jody, you had something to add? Right. I, I mean, as a city, the challenge is how deeply do we insert ourselves in that?
And I don't know that we can. Other cities, um, like in American Fork, where we have subdivisions down by Lu, Utah Lake. We have gone to the extent of putting a big block B with a slash through it that tells them that they're not allowed basements. You know, just to make it obnoxious as possible that, hey, a lot that you're, not, not just the lot next to you, every single lot has this little symbol on it. You know, whether it's a note on the plat, whether it's other things, we can do that to, to alert them. Cause I've done all this work to identify the problems, you know, I'd hate to get them lost in, in the, just the process of a sale agent not fully disclosing, you know, those things are an option too, to just communicate the information that we've all reviewed tonight of what has been done to get these lots to this point.
So this septic note that you are, um, agreeing to put on that plat then, Jody, do you feel that it's enough to, to make people aware so that they're not getting sticker shock when they talk to you? Or do we need to actually add another sentence to it to, to make sure that it's very clear?
And we, I mean, we can't stop every unscrupulous seller either.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's something where I, I think that there are precautionary steps that we can take.
I guess my point is just that they have agreed to put this on, just making sure that, like you said, with the other example, there's a big B with a line through it that says you won't have a basement if, if the septic note on this plat would be clear.
Okay, any other, uh, I, did you have more, was it questions?
I think that, um.
Is your office in Midway?
No, that's my brother.
How are his?
He doesn't have any yet. He needs his friends to ride his.
Yeah.
Does he have friends?
Civil engineer, we're not, we're not a very popular group. You know? You all need us, but we're.
Only grudgingly.
The, the whole idea of a civil engineer is we do our job well enough that as you drive down the street, you're not looking at what we do. That goes for, that, that goes for this road as well is, you know, we follow the, what Ted has proposed, which I believe is the correct way. If you guys really want a very dull afternoon, you're welcome to come entertain the proof roll test. Cause there's a bunch of engineers, we look straight down at this big tire going across and we're, we're just watching. Hopefully the earth doesn't go like this. It's really exciting.
That part actually seemed kind of cool to me when Ted was describing.
You're welcome to come watch. I mean, it's
I'm good.
Once and you're good.
Yeah.
But, but it's, it is actually like, again, your standards and specifications, this proof roll. It's not just a, oh, it's going to solve this problem. Every construction that's done, this proof roll is, is key to find, oh, we're good for 90% of the road, but the guys went to lunch early, this last 10 feet, and it just kind of, the proof roll finds those, those issues. So.
So before we're done, uh, I assume Ted took some pictures and they're in our, they're in our packet today. Are, is there any material in those pictures that you thought was interesting and tell a story or is everything fine? Do you, do you know the pictures I'm talking about? Well, your trucks parked up there when you took them. I think it was you.
I think that was the test, test.
You know, it's a red truck like yours. Oh, what do you, well, are those significant? Do they tell any, anything, Wayne? Cause to me, this looked like there's a lot of settlement, you know, in part of that.
Well, yeah.
But I don't know what that.
So again, those pictures are also that top three feet that we're like, oh, we want to peel that back. Because it was like a pile here, a pile here. Oh, we kind of smooshed the piles together. It's not to any grade or staking. It was just kind of haphazardly placed. And so this approval lets us get in, do it the correct way, get it to a point where it is documented, we're following the city's standard specifications and getting it in right.
So Ken, is your firm, uh, kind of managing this part of the project? Are you going to do the, you know, are, are you going to be leading the, the road?
Well, so this, that's an excellent question. Because people ask what I do and I tell them, well, the easiest way to explain it is I'm a marriage counselor. I'm a marriage counselor between my client, that owns property, that wants to develop it into lots. And the city that sets the rules on how to develop. And I'm as a third party, put the plans together that you approve. And then city staff and CMT do testing and staff does reviews. And I come out when the contractor says, whoops, I've messed up. How do I fix this? And I look at my design and say, well, you've either messed up a lot or you've messed up a little. And Ted, this is how I think we can fix it and we work those issues out. So I'm not there day to day. The, that's how the industry is set up, that once this approval body approves it and we go to construction, the city's public work and your inspectors, you kind of inspect again, your own utilities that are going in. Sure. And, and I, Ted's got the mic.
Sure. And, and I, Ted's got the mic.
Are we only doing the compaction on where the road will be or are we doing it on where the lots are as well? Okay, it's, it's asking that. So, you, you said after seven years, it's like the natural grade. So, if, if so, someone, I mean, back to what Wayne had said, um, that we would have to do the building permit based on the organic natural grade, which is gonna be quite a lot lower. Then if they didn't build for seven years, would then the top be now considered the natural grade? Okay. So we will still, even though that will be compacted too, as if it was, we will still go down and say that was where the natural was and you can't build higher than this. Yeah, yeah.
So, at this, yeah, at this point, none of the building footprints or the building setback, the allowable building setbacks of where the homes could go are in this area.
The only thing that might, might impact would be their driveway.
It'd be, it'd be your driveway.
Right, right. Exactly. That's what I'm saying. It's not gonna impact the building height because it will be, setbacks will be far enough away, shouldn't have a problem. If it does impact anything, it would only be a driveway. That would need to have whatever other mitigations done.
So, yeah, the reason for my question is, uh, as, as I've read through the history of this and I've seen it, um, as I've driven around town, I go, go by there quite regularly. The work that's been done there has, has not, I mean, even, even as of recent, has not really followed what we, what we said. So even our test pits, there was supposed to be a plan proposed and then approved before, and then the test pits were just dug. Which turned out okay, they did it right. But my concern i- in this is we approved the, the subdivision based on pulling this material out. Because lots of things weren't done right. Um, now we're gonna go back and say, okay, well, it, and I, and I get it, I, I would expect the, the, the owner to come back and say, look, we're looking for a better option. That's what I do in my job, right? I go back and, and, and always try to look for that, that better option. So pushback is, is expected, but my personal concern in this is that we set a plan, I have zero confidence it's gonna get followed, based on history. And then it's not towards you because you're not really, you know, managing it day to day. Um, it's gonna put a lot on our city staff to make sure that things are done right. And make sure that, that, and, and I've already talked to Ted and, and really happy with his answers. If, if something gets done that he should have inspected and didn't get to inspect, he's gonna make them pull it out. And that needs to be very, very clear. That we are not giving any, any, uh, variances like that, um, where something is, is misstepped again. I wanna make sure that, that, that we're covering our staff and, and that the staff has the backing that they need if we go through this approval process, um, that it's very, very clear that we don't, we're, we're not going to tolerate any more, uh, unauthorized steps or missteps or, or anything like that. It's, it's, it's gotta be what we approve. Because we've seen way too many of this with this property.
Sure. I, I understand and I, I appreciate those, those concerns and, you know, I, I have lots of projects that I work on in lots of different cities. And in some cities, you know, this, we have this approval meeting. And if a project gets approved, there's like a day or two, the contractor has his permit and he can get started. I have other cities that their pre-construction checklist takes about three months for them to get all of the, the cross the Ts and dot the Is. And no work happens until all of that is complete and a pre-construction and the bond is placed and all of those things. And because of, uh, Wayne's excellent history, you know, airing out all the dirty laundry, I would agree with you that the bond, you know, no work is to happen until all of those things, you guys can make the laundry list, has to be done and complete and the bond is in place. And it's not just, oh, I'll accept some dirt for free.
I think it's important to know also is there's a, there's a cheap way to build, or less expensive way, not cheap. There's a less expensive way of building things and that's called following the process. And then there's a more expensive way of building things and that's called do whatever you want and then have reality kick in the teeth. Um, and I think really what, what we're talking about here is we're going to make them hit our standard. And they can either do it the cheapest or the most efficient way possible or not. And our approval here doesn't have anything there. Cause we just have to say, do they meet our standards? If yes, we have to approve it.
Yeah.
If, so how well the project, which I feel your concerns, but how well the project flows post our approvals, just can't, you know, it can't impact our decision tonight.
And, and I, so that is, and what I'm saying is that is my reticence in approving this adjustment to what we've already approved. We've approved pulling all the dirt out. And, and understand that that's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars to go back and redo everything. Get it. Um, my, I, I have, I'm, I'm having a really hard time wanting to, to give a quarter, right? Um, because the rules have not been followed over and over and over and over. I mean, we had to actually post a sign because nobody listened to us to not put any more dirt there.
Sure.
Um, and I remember when that sign went up, I wasn't on the city council, but I remember going by there and seeing that sign and then asking about it. And talking to, to Craig. Uh, and, and I, before I can vote yes, I just need that assurance that it's not going to, it's not gonna put, it, we're not gonna have any more problem. I mean, that's, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for that feel good for me because right now I don't have it.
Right.
I also think that, you know, our, our role is the health, safety and welfare of this, of our community. And by approving it, we're telling a future neighbor, a future resident that we feel confident in their ability to live in our community safely. And so I think going back to what, what you're saying is that we've had, um, you know, a few years of experiences that may not have given us a lot of confidence in, in that ability to prove it. It may be okay. I mean, we, we trust Ted and so when Ted says, yes, this is gonna be okay. We're going on Ted. We're not going on the developer. Um, you know, in terms of, in terms of the safety of, and, and the process being followed. And, and that's what gives us confidence to vote yes, is, is, is Ted's word to us that he's worked with these people. Yes, the stamp does mean something, but we have no level of personal trust with, with those who have the stamp. I mean, we're meeting you and we, we then say, okay, your civil engineer stamp means something. Um, because of what you've explained to us, I think that it is uh, because of not just this project, but other projects that may not have stood the test of time that we have trigger responses to, to variety of things. And yet at the same time, we also realize that as a state, there are developers who put your city's name out there as, as being, um, difficult to work with. And it gets around pretty darn fast and, and people say, don't ever do business here, they're so difficult. When in reality, someone's not following the process. It's not necess- we're not holding it up because we don't want new neighbors. It's because we wanna make sure that self set, safety measure is in place prior. And so I think that is, is something that we do need to consider, that potential, um,
Right.
That it's just being done correctly.
So, I mean, approval, approval, um, what is the, so, let's just even talk timeline. It's approved tonight, they're not going to do anything until spring. Realistically. For, you know, the winter's going, the winter's going to hit. So.
That it's, they've got one month of asphalt potential, that's not gonna happen. You're right.
If they wanna build this road in one month, I probably have an issue with that. Ted would probably have an issue with that.
Yeah.
You're like, no, you're, if you're trying to hit that window, you're going way too fast.
If you're just starting.
You know, and so if, if it's.
But do they know that? Just cause we know it doesn't mean they know it.
Okay, okay. So it means they're starting, they're starting in the spring at the earliest. And if they go through this process, they're probably about this time next year, they're asphalting the road and, and being done. You know, and so, you know, is it acceptable, like the last, the last, last time it was approved, because I have had this project approved about four times now. Um, you know, it's, it's your standard, I don't even know how long your standard approval goes for before it expires. Wayne?
Why is it taking so long?
It's market conditions.
Yeah, it's had issues.
Mm-hmm.
My wife worked on it on the planning commission back when we were kids.
Right.
In a very short period of time, however, you had a final plat to present to the city. We know, we do our very, very best not to hold things up. Usually it's a developer does not get the required documentation and things to us to have sufficiently reviewed to meet our requirements. That's where the holdup is. All that material is with the city, we, well, we look at it even as it comes in. So we don't hold on to it and we've got a whole bunch of review to do in one day. We review it as it comes in. So the holdup won't be the city. The holdup is developer getting the required information to us. I think that information is fairly clear from our ordinances and our checklist that we have of what we need to have. Ken, does that answer your question?
Well, I, I think that in, in other cities, I'm not quite familiar with yours on this. In, in other cities, they, they're like, you have, your final plat is approved, your, your final plat approval expires one year from the date of approval.
Because of weather and whatnot.
Yeah.
We, it could snow in September, you know?
I hope it doesn't.
Two years ago, it was rock over at Snow and they stopped.
All right, well, and, and I, I think that, I mean, we, we can go in circles. I mean, I, we either accept the assurances that our city engineer has given us and, and we've got the teeth to hold their feet to the fire. I mean, if, if, if the development is not in compliance, I mean, it'll get shut down. It's, it's, it's that simple. And, and so everybody knows that, I think. And so it's just a question of, uh, do we want to make this allowance and, and move it forward or, or choose otherwise?
Or is it a reapproval with some changes to the note and a readjustment to that approval timeframe? There's, you have lots of options.
Okay. And then we, we have a public comment here. Generally, we don't allow public comments in the non-public comment section, but we're just glad you're here. So please ask a question.
We'll encourage all this attendance. This is great.
I mean, I suppose it's an option that we could give, make it a private road. Okay, Ted, take it away. Not this one. A, a fair question though. All right. Well, I think that it's probably a good place to move on unless there are other questions. Uh, okay.
Sounds great.
All right. Thanks, Ken.
Before I vote on this, uh, Wayne, did the planning commission approve these, these changes? You did? Okay. And recommend to us that things are in order now? I mean.
It's toward the end of the document. Yeah, I, I like that. Okay. Okay.
You mean editing, editing. Gotcha.
It's, it's well written. It'll work.
No, I think so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, now on to money. Item two and three. Uh, Chris, June twenty twenty-four and July twenty twenty-four financials and check disbursements.
Um, I did receive a couple of questions from council members. One was regarding the transitioning between the different years, cause we are coming from June to July, which is a new budget year. And some of the expenses have credits showing in them. And that's just a function of we received the money in the previous uh, budget year and writing the checks out this year. So just kind of a, it's a fun time of the year. Um, otherwise I think if, I'm sorry, Carrie, I can't hear you if you're saying something.
Just the recidiation between the last year to the new year, there's always that little weird gap.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I usually, that can go on for another month. So when you get the August ones, there might be something like that also. We have been working with the auditors, they've been, they were in the city center yesterday going through, um, all the documents that they like to review. And I got everything to them that they required and the audit seems to be going well. Should hopefully have a report by Halloween time for the council to review. We will have, invite the auditors to come again, maybe November. Typically they, they come in January, but maybe we can get them in November this year. Um, any other thoughts or questions on the financials?
I just had a quick question. I saw that we spent fifteen thousand for some radios for the fire department. Just wondered how many radios that lies? Or was it a deposit?
Is it four?
Just curious. Okay. Okay. I just wondered, I just wondered how much, how many that bought. Okay, that was my question.
Okay, great.
Okay, anything else for Chris?
Chris, I, one funny thing, well, a couple of funny things I noticed on the reports and I was kinda showing some of it. Chris, I, one funny thing, well, a couple of funny things I noticed on the reports, and I was kind of showing some of it to to the office staff today, Jody and Lori. And when we get our our, I was looking at the payroll. And when the report comes out, it looks like something is being pasted over, because you can see, it looks like some print on the line. It almost looks like we're covering something up, but I went through the note, some of the numbers, and the numbers all add up properly. So I don't know what it is that's coming out in that report, but it's something you might want to take a look at. And I also noticed that in July, it has the council members for sixty hours and me for three. And June has me for two hours and everybody else for forty. So just wanted to point that out, but there's a little the money's right, so I was looking at the hours like this is.
Our twelve dollars?
And the mayor has zero. Higher rate, I get my job done faster.
You're more efficient.
Just just for clarity, I wanted to make sure I point those things out, that they
It's because you zoomed in.
And I just don't want anybody looking and saying, are they trying to cover something up here, especially in our payrolls?
That's good scrutiny.
I'll I'll take a look at that. And you and Ben are a little bit challenging because you snowplow also, and so your payrolls get a little bit. And so there was just probably something in there early on, so I will get that fixed. As far as the pasting and copying, I just print directly a PDF from my accounting program, and I'm wondering if anybody else notices it on theirs? Or if that maybe is your PDF reader.
So it's it's really, really visible in July. And and if you look in the second column on everybody's under where it says workers, which is the workers comp, it's got what looks like the tops of some letters where we've it looks like it's been whited out partially. Um, I just don't want anyone to look at these, and there's a few other places it happens in there. I just don't want anyone to to FOIA, or not FOIA, but uh, gram it and 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 think that that something shady going on. Because the numbers are all right, it just is, something just looks funny in it for somebody.
So you're accusing Chris of bad Photoshop skills?
Pretty much.
I didn't notice the hours thing. That is kind of funny.
It is. It was hilarious.
I didn't even notice it.
How many do you want me to show you, Brian? How many do you want me to put down for you?
However, many it really, I mean, I just don't want people to to look at weird things and
How much did Brian get paid for two hours ago?
Okay, any other questions on items two or three? Thank you, Chris. Moving on to item four, um, SESD and MAG and COG. I don't have anything on MAG and COG. SESD, um, as you may know, there's been lawsuits that have been underway with Payson and Salem, and those, I'm happy to report, have been settled. So it's nice to be able to move on to the actual business at hand. And that is the only thing that comes to mind, but I think that's a positive update. We do have one of our local residents coming next council meeting, along with Dan Ellsworth. This young man, he attended a youth leadership conference and was gonna come report on that. And then Dan is gonna give the council just kind of a SESD survey. By survey, I don't mean taking a survey, I mean giving an overview of it. So that's all I have to report on that. Council member Hilliard?
Um, nothing further transfer station from me.
Hey, thank you. Council member Hutchings?
Okay, so Mountain Eagle Water Association, just a quick overview. So the grant monies that they had applied for, that the rest of the monies came in, that was for the water modeling or the water banking that they've been working on. There's actually a thirty one hundred dollar excess in what came in from the grants money. That's actually gonna go towards the the next stage, which is the modeling project that they're looking at the the water level so they can, they can go onto that. So they voted on on putting this management plan together, this groundwater management plan that I talked about previously, where they're gonna start looking at those those rates. And and they're gonna ask the cities to be reporting monthly rather than annually their water usage. They voted and and passed the continuing the program on the database management side of things and voted for the the engineering company to to build all the alternate plans so they can start putting those together and and making recommendations on cities that can use surface water over groundwater and and try to balance those out so we maintain our aquifers better. This is not binding for the the members. Um, none of this is is actually binding for us. It's all, it's all voluntary. So if if we decide that it's too onerous to to report monthly, then we report annually. You don't have to. It's just something that they're trying to do and and is being modeled actually across the whole state. This this is actually being copied through different aquifers throughout the state.
Have you talked, I I would assume that would be Lori that would uh, be uh, do I, have you talked to her?
I haven't talked to her.
It would be worth asking if it is something that she can pretty handily do.
I think with our state, it would be really simple to get those reports out and get them to them.
It seems like.
It's a really great thing. Because it it allows those cities, like, I mean, even Genoa can actually take groundwater or can take surface water over groundwater. They they've got those those options. We don't. We're 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 aquifer water. But it's, it's gonna be a way of of helping maintain that. Cedar City area has has caused some great concern. So everybody's gonna start implementing this. Basically, they're they're taking what Mountain Eagle's done.
Awesome.
That's it. We did not have a a South Utah Valley or, yeah, South Utah Valley meeting. Um, and our next meeting will be November fourth for October is.
Thank you. Uh, council member Kinnison?
All right, uh, just a few things. As far as nine one one board meetings. The changeover in the radios is a work in progress. They I'll just put it bluntly, there's a few down there at dispatch that are about to pull their hair out, because these radios are are more difficult to switch to than. So they're working through all of those issues, but I think I see forward progress. But they're not gonna be ready in October. He's shaking his head too. But but I'll keep you updated on on how they, what they say is going on. One of the things that's happened is there are other dispatch centers in our valley here, in our county. And they just, one of them just gave a two percent raise to their employees. And our dispatch has to stay competitive with that. If we don't, the employees just move over to the other dispatch, because they're trained, actually. To kind of move over to those other places quite easily. So there's debate about maybe we need to make a two percent change as well. And frankly, I think they will, just to try and keep those employees. They are always hiring. We're always trying to find uh, new dispatchers. It's a it's a hard job for people to stay on. They 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 figure when they train a group of people, last time they trained four and they kept two. And that's typically what what results, is they train for two months and two people figure out that they're not cut out for this. But but there, I saw an ad in our in our Facebook page that they were hiring, and so I was glad to see that there, because we need to keep our dispatchers staffed. They're sixty five percent staffed right now, so they'll always be hiring in in my view, what it's been since I've been on the board. I just want to mention that a lot of cities commented that they have cameras. And those that have cameras are adding more cameras. They find it's 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 important to protect cities' assets and just be aware of that, that cameras are a thing and and they are, they're being used more by cities in our county. And I think in any decisions we make toward cameras, I think is 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 good money spent. The other weird thing that's been going on for the last three months is they've been talking about how many nine one one calls our dispatch center get that don't belong there. So you're driving down the freeway and you might be zinging through some city down mo- you know, Mona or anywhere down the freeway, for example, and you call nine one one. It doesn't always go to the right dispatch center. And dispatch centers are told and they're audited that they never want to tell a nine one one caller, hey, write down this nine, this nine-digit phone number and call this number. They don't want to do that. So they are responsible at the dispatch point to transfer it to the correct dispatch center. So uh, twelve percent of our calls are are being rerouted. And and it's it's bad to get too many, because the, during the audit, they penalize you, the state, the state does. They don't want this to happen. They want calls to go to the right place every time. So so they're trying to figure out how to battle this. It happened down in Washington County a whole lot. And they got a big grant. And that grant didn't fix anything. So there's still an issue, just make you aware of that, when you call nine one one.
You don't know where you're going.
It's magic that you ever get to the right, you know.
Is it just based on the cell phone tower that happens to ping?
There's a lot, there's a lot of hardware and software involved that's supposed to route you to the right one, but to our dispatch, it doesn't matter. They have to handle your call. And they need to follow through and make sure you get transferred over to the other one without much delay and and correctly. So I don't think they know why it happens sometimes, but it does.
Never even thought that it would be going to the wrong one.
Yeah, yeah, you kind of assume.
Did it happen with landlines?
Maybe, no. No, it's it's cells that that goof them up. Landlines were solid.
Yeah, I know.
They also knew your address on the landline, you know, so they were.
Well, I think Wayne's the only one here that has a land.
Oh, Wayne, so.
Wayne, you're you're in good hands.
If you can get to the phone.
Yeah, so anyway, it's it's a great run dispatch. I I'm glad we're hooked up with them. They they serve us well and and they do a good job, I believe, uh, for all of our cities. And I don't have anything else on on that.
Great, thanks, Doral.
Oh, I, most importantly, I did announce to them that our sirens are working again and as I was, they were thrilled, you know, so so they now know. They know now that we're sirens, yeah. They're glad it's working and they're not involved. That's what I meant to say.
And applause for your hard work to get those all transferred over, because that was.
Credit the guy in the back there that's yeah, that took in that. And we have another test coming up, don't we? October first Saturday in October.
Right in the middle of conference.
I was already thinking that.
Like you're listening anyway.
So twelve is a break, right? So we.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Twelve oh five.
Oh, well, all right.
Okay, thanks, Doral.
Thank you.
Uh, council member Lunt?
Okay, I have a couple of things. First of all, I I did want to, um, we had the state service project and our, the local state president, he had told them he wanted them to focus on Woodland Hills. And I was sick, so the mayor filled in for me and went down there and supervised. But they really did a good job at the park. They cleared out a lot of brush, a lot of weeds. So I just wanted to like, I guess publicly thank them and thank everybody that came and worked and donated time, because there were a lot of citizens in the community that came and worked and um, they really did a good job. And it made a huge difference for even the people that have to do the maintenance on the park. It made it easier. There were a lot of low-lying branches and when they would mow, they would like hit the branch and stuff. So it was really good. So.
I heard that Peterson almost got upended with one of those branches.
The mower had a bar on it and he drove under a tree and didn't realize and it flipped it backwards and my husband had to go go and like rescue him. So it was a safety thing. So just a big, big shout out to the the state, the local state for for getting volunteers to do that for us. And and thank you for filling in. I was sick for about ten days.
Glad you're better.
Yeah, and then um, we have the deadline for the newsletter coming up, so I need a TED Talk. And I need a Wayne's, Lord, I don't have one of those either. Wayne's, yeah, I'm missing those, so I need those. Got a couple of days. If anybody else has anything that you want to go in there, I mean, I have a few things. Lori sent me something, but just letting you know.
You got your council.
I got yours.
We have, have the plans made for truck or treat? We have that.
I'm getting to that. Hold your horses. Um, and then Woodland Hills Days was awesome. Um, Friday night, we fed about six hundred. The car show was bigger than it's been, so we had a good crowd there. The band was awesome. And the cool thing about the band is that half of them are from Woodland Hills, so I really like that. Like, I like supporting the local talent. We incorporated the art show this year. And I drove by several of the houses and they had a lot of cars out front, so they had good crowds. They did good. Um, so I thought that was really good. Um, I really liked the breakfast. What was everybody's thought about the breakfast here at the fire station? I liked it. Do you like it, Monica?
All the feedback I got said it was good.
Did did we lose people in the transition? That was the only thing, is the parade seemed pretty sparsely attended.
That was the problem. Yes, we did. We lost people. So that's the issue. We'll, I'll, we're gonna have a postmortem. Um, I went with the Calis. They did it, the the Calis did a phenomenal job. They did really good. So, um, you know, typically always on Saturday, our crowd is a little smaller, but the moving, it, but there was also a lot going on that Saturday. There were a lot of conflicts between state conference and there was a BYU game. There was just a lot of things going on on Saturday, so we did have a smaller crowd at the park on Saturday. But really, Friday night is the big draw anymore. It really is with the dinner and the band and the car show. Friday night is the night that we draw people. So it is what it is.
No, it was great.
And then Truck or Treat's all planned. It's all done.
Oh, good. What are you gonna be?
Kathy, Kathy Anderson's in charge and she has everything reserved and she has everything and every year she builds on it. And so it's bigger and better this year than it was. Yeah, no, I have that all.
We've got a new banner, right? Because I've got the old tattered banner in my garage.
Two new ones last year. Um, oh, yeah, and that, thank you. Ted? You you can't say no. I am demanding a shelf space somewhere, because here's the thing. We have to buy new bingo because it's put somewhere. We can't find it and somebody threw it away. Every time I go to put up banners, now I'm hoarding, I bought them anyway. I've bought the last five sets, but I'm hoarding the bungies for the signs, because every time I bring them to the city and then I go to put up a new banner, all the bungies are gone. And I I need a spot.
We love bungies, with a lock.
And I'm fine with that. I.
Some of it was targeted.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just want a spot where I can keep all of the activity stuff in some container. I know where it is. I go in there all the time. But I just, stuff ends up missing and I end up, every time I hang banners, I have to go buy bungies, which is fine. I'm fine. Thank you.
Is Truck or Treat starting at six then?
I believe so. I need to verify.
That's what she told me. She sent me something already.
Sure it's the twenty sixth, am I right? It's a Saturday?
No, it's always on Halloween.
Oh, yay, okay.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure she said six p.m., but I would just make it sure.
Yeah, I was gonna text her.
We're purists here, Doral. I say we're purists. One of the state observants.
Even if it falls on Sunday, man, happy Halloween.
She already talked to the fire department. She already coordinated with them. So she did all of that. She loves it.
So Ted knows all about the fire department and Truck or Treat?
Yep.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
She's amazing. She's awesome. I know I checked, once it was all over, literally on Sunday, I texted her and I said, so are we gonna do this again? And she goes, oh, yeah. I've got it all planned.
Yeah, that's great.
Anyway, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Council member Malkovich?
Okay, um, animal shelter. Everything's good. We, there's always more cats than dogs. Okay, animal shelter, everything's good. We, there's always more cats than dogs. They've, changed the spay and neuter price list, if anybody's interested in that. The only events that they had was one of the adoption and clinics in Santaquin. We're not having clinics here because we don't have a good turnout, but anyone who would like to have the services, they're always available at the shelter, which is right next to the sheriff's office, if any of you are interested in going. We are doing training right now, just so that we're in compliance for the audit on the special district and service, special district and special service district board member training. We're just, everybody has to do it. It's online and it's no big deal. I did want to.
On the, on the animal shelter, if I trap a feral cat, can I get it spayed or neutered?
Yep, you can get it. You can, they take everybody because there's a lot of spay.
I want them to spay and neuter it and I'll bring it back.
And bring it back. That's the, that's the catch and release or catch and keep.
I have a buddy that hates me, so I love it.
Yep. So, so you can, you can take it, take it there. They, they do charge you, but they let you have it back. Yep. But I did want to, also Ted had asked me to report on the CPF funding that we asked for with Burgess Owens. They had 80 submissions. Those are community projects. We put in for funding for water project. Only 10 actually were funded by the committee and we were not one of them, unfortunately. They just didn't have enough money. It was probably based on that this is an election year and they're trying to, I don't know what, but it wasn't approved. But they thought our proposal was really, really good and they want us to put it in again, which will be in March. This last year. We, they only had a four-day notice total and only a 24-hour notice for every city and they got 80 submissions. So it shows you that there was a lot of competitive, just a lot of competition in it for this. But yes, that was based on the federal government had not yet passed their budget last year. And so they had, we had to wait until that day that they passed it and then we had 24 hours to get our stuff in, which was ridiculous. They're hoping that we'll have a whole month next time, a whole month of March to get our application in. They liked our application fine. We have set up a preliminary date, which I will work with you, Ted, to have Burgess actually come here and Congressman Owens and go and walk through what our project is and see on site and see what we're needing. But on paper, they really liked our project. So they want us to invite him to come in Feb, anytime in February or early March before all of the dates are. I know I said, well, we'll have a lot of snow, but we can still walk through and say, this is our project. But the appropriation cycle should be the entire month. And so that should be on our side because it shows that we're still being dedicated with our project. So I just wanted to let you know that that's where we're. Sorry that we didn't get it, but again, they only approved 10 of the 80. 10 of the 80. It's just, it's just rough.
A lot of people with their hands out. Thank you. Okay, upcoming city council meeting items. I, I was serious about, we might want to revisit that durability bond or at least look into it. Maybe before we go to an agenda item, we take a look and see what some other cities are doing because that might be an area that we're exposed that we don't want to be. Yeah, good point. Okay, anything from anybody else? Okay, well then let's take a break. And I, I, are you here for the pledge? Okay, great. Well, we'll take a quick break and then you're, you're, you're up. So thanks for being here. We're, I would have, and both of you. So I'm guessing that I was talking to Jody, this is the season where all the students really take an interest in local government. Well, whatever gets you here. So we're, we're glad you're here. Okay, so let's reconvene at eight o'clock and then we'll start the actual city council meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Just kept going.
Going, going.
Yeah, I know.
No, 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 do it. We're going to go.
Actually, there is reason to, so. Yeah.
I'm not going to make it. I already know that.
Well, my apologies for that, even though it wasn't my fault.
Wasn't.
I had one item on the agenda more or less.
If our name's not on the reason for the cloak, can we just get leave?
Well, there's, there's two pieces to this.
I know. My name's on the sign.
All right. Well, let's call our city council meeting to order. And Councilmember Malkovich, if you would kindly lead us or offer the invocation. And then our guest pledge of allegiance is Kaiden Naylor. I might be a relative of yours. I'm related to some Naylor's in Salt Lake. So maybe we'll have to trace our genealogy back and see where.
Put it on Find My Relatives.
Yeah, I know. That's true. We could do that.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to come and meet together as council members and residents of our city. We're grateful for our residents and the quality of life that we have here on this mountain. We're grateful for the protectful, watchful eye with regards to fire and other natural hazards that we have had. And we're grateful for the, for the work that our residents continue to do in, and our fire mitigation with our chipping projects. Please bless us tonight as we consider the things on our agenda that we have thoughtfully looked through and that we can make decisions that are beneficial to our residents now and to potential residents in the future. Please bless us that our minds may be open and that we may have thoughtful discussions. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay, item nine, the public comment portion of our meeting. Do we have anyone here? Okay, Sherry, I think I have an idea as to what you're going to say. I don't know. Maybe I don't.
You don't.
I don't? Oh, okay.
I'm, I am so excited. The Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant that we applied for, for the trail, I got an email from Lori tonight and they paid the money.
Oh, great.
So woo-hoo.
I sleep on it.
Which gives me great momentum moving forward to apply for another one because I think I'm getting the hang of this thanks to all of you who've helped me. So thank you.
No, thank you. That's awesome.
I was $2,800.
$2,800.
Yeah, no, that's awesome.
Great. That is awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Now's your chance to be on the record officially.
Okay, well then we will close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to item 10, approval of the September 10th, 2024 city council meet, city council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lunt. Seconded by Councilmember Hutchings. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 11, approval of the amended Platte B Bellevue subdivision.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended Platte B Bellevue subdivision with the new engineering with, for compaction as well as a septic note.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Hilliard, seconded by Councilmember Malkovich, Councilmember Malkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison.
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Item 12, well, and we can do 13 as well, resolution regarding 2024, 28, or resolution 2024, 28 and 24, 2024, 29, adopting the June and July 2024 check disbursements. Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hutchings.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So you, that was for both, right?
Yes.
Just to be clear. Okay. And there is a reason to enter a closed session. So if we could get someone to make such a motion, we have some items to discuss that pursuant to Utah Codes 544204 and 544205.
I'll make a motion that we go into a closed session.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lunt, seconded by Councilmember Malkovich.
Before you vote on it.
Yeah.
Would you tell the youngsters what this means? This is an important part of government.
Yeah, so generally what we want is transparency, but in very limited circumstances where we're discussing legal matters, where we have to discuss legal strategy, or if we're discussing certain purchases that would put the city in a compromised position, if the information were to get out, we do have to enter a closed session. And so it's a very limited opportunity for us to discuss matters that if they were made transparent, it could undermine our efforts with respect to the city at large. So that's why we enter into a closed session.
And it's still recorded. It's just not publicly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, good call, Doral.
You know, I, I don't ever feel comfortable doing anything without the public hearing about it, but there are issues. The mayor explained well what they are.
We can only do it under that. That's why he also read out the Utah code. You can only do it based on what the state code allows us to do. So we read that before we go into a closed session and we all have to vote on it.
Hey.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, no, thank you. So did we get a motion?
Yep.
Did we get a second? Okay, Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison.
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're going to go into closed sessions. So thank you for being here. We appreciate your participation and hope you'll come again. I didn't even see. Okay, we're back.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Councilmember Malkovich, seconded by Councilmember Kinnison. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks, Chris.
You guys.
See you later.